All right, presentation to the court by Air Evac. Sorry you got to follow that Mario.
No problem. No problem. Quite interesting by the way.
And you are looked up and ready to hear what I think with your power.
Yes, sir. I'll be over there. Ready to go. First of all, we'd like to thank you Martha Hedrick, our program director and myself. We would like to express our gratitude for the time that you, Judge, have been able to allow us, members of Commissioner's office. Thank you so much, we really appreciate it. You can see how busy you folks are in different areas of the community. And that's precisely why we're here today. We want to be able to bring something to the table that may be able to continue to support the community. Matter of fact, with Glen Rose, we have a relationship already, being able to provide memberships to some of their employees, City, ISD, Fossil, RIM is also a member. Benefiting from a membership program to benefit their employees. And just a few weeks ago, Rough Creek Lodge signed on. And so, we're growing specifically, we're focusing on the first responders, volunteer fire departments. That's something that really, really brings value to those who take care of us in our time of need. So, Granberry Volunteer Fire Department, they just signed on their entire body as well. So, the objective here today is just to present something to you that may be able to work together with your objectives in looking after those who take care of us in our community. So, with that, we're going to take you down to a local operation with Martha being the program director. She's going to walk us through the local operation here in our area, which by the way, as most of you know, Martha Hedrick is also a community member. I personally live in Granberry, been there for 13 years, love this area. I've come to Big Bucks multiple times, so I enjoy it quite a bit. But then, after she's done with giving us a local snapshot or view, then I will walk us through what really brings value to the national, the larger, the satellite view of our program. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Martha.
Thank you so much for having us here today. And like Mario said, my name is Martha Hedrick. I do live here in Glen Rose, Pennsylvania Tiger. I have three kids, been through all the school system. I do live in the county though. So, anyway, this is just a picture of our local group. We have Air Evac, Life Team 69. We actually opened years ago, August 2006, here in Glen Rose with this hospital. And we were under the name of Texas Livestar. In 2010, we actually relocated the helicopter due to the hospital expansion, and we did move to Granberry at that time. And then, Air Evac is our owner and operator at this point, and so they changed our name from Livestar to Air Evac. They took that opportunity when we relocated to change the name. But, we were located here at the hospital and did move to Granberry in 2010. Air Evac history, I don't want to go too far down the operations side, but I want you guys to know what you're getting. Air Evac is known to be a rural helicopter, we serve the communities of the rural setting. Our founder and CEO, Colin Collins, is actually a hospital CEO in West Plains, Missouri, or he was in 1985. He lost his best friend to trauma, and they had a three-hour drive to a trauma center. That's where Air Evac started. He thought, why, if we want to live rurally, do we have to be treated like second-class citizens if we don't have the care? So, he literally got a helicopter, and you know, back then it was more of the MASH days. MASH Angels is something that is a book that's written about the beginning of Air Evac. And that's exactly what he did, was just bring a community together. They paid for a helicopter, and they put it there, and the paramedics would, paramedics, EMTs would drive up to the helicopter. Everybody got out of the ambulance, put the patient in the helicopter, and off they went. We don't get to do it that way today, but with that being said, our CEO, you know, he still truly believes that Air Evac needs to serve the rural communities, just because that's who he is. And today, he is retired, he is still a pig farmer in West Plains, Missouri. He makes a lot of moonshine and pig farm, that's what he does. But anyway, I always like to tell a story about Colin, because that's who Air Evac is, that's our roots, and that's why we're providing access to rural communities. And access is what our mission is, accountability commitment, community excellence, safety, and stewardship. A company overview, Air Evac is part of a larger company, which Mario is going to get into, so I don't want to go through all of our things, but we do have over 600, just under the Air Evac name, over 600 nurses, 600 paramedics, and 600 pilots that just apply for our Air Evac name. And we focus on our patients, what the patient needs is what the patient gets. It is, we are not associated or affiliated with any facilities, just our own owner company. So, we do not take you to one facility over the other. We go to the most appropriate facility for the patient, whatever the patient needs, or if it's a patient preference, and that can be honored. So, if you are a cardiac patient today, and you have a cardiologist in Fort Worth that you want to go to, then we will honor and go to the facility that's best for you today. If you're a trauma patient, you can't speak to us, then we're going to take care of you and take you to the closest appropriate trauma facility, so. Pilots, and I'm not going to go through all of the operational stuff, I just want to make sure that everybody has a little overview of the training that we have for all of our pilots and our nurses, our paramedics. It's well into a safety zone for any helicopter ambulance operation. We are a leader in the industry in our safety management system. This is something that the FAA does require us to have, multiple items that are listed here. All of these things, Air Evac put into place long before the FAA made them our requirement. A good example of that is wearing helmets for your safety, night vision goggles for the safety of the community and the aircraft and everybody on scene. Different things like train awareness, different helicopter items. Our fleet, we are primarily a 206 company, and that's a Long Ranger, that's what they had in the military for years. We have multiple other frames, for anybody who's aviation, the 407, which is a little bit bigger, that's actually the aircraft that we have in Granberry. It does take a third person, so if we have an interpreter that is needed, you know, somebody else for the care of the patient or a family member if warranted and also needed. And then, we have a couple other that we do not have in this area. In Oklahoma and South Texas, we have our EC-130s and 135s. So, we've got a whole variety of different aircraft. And in all of those aircraft, there's a list of all of our safety items that we have in place. And one of the things I do want to mention with our safety management system is, safety is what is most important. Not that our patients are not, but we have to be safe in order to get to our patients safely, in order to get our patients safely to the destination hospital. So, safety is something that we are leaders in. They have all of our accreditation, we're a CAMES accredited program, and CAMES has asked, you know, a lot of the safety management questions of all of the programs across the nation, the questions that follow all of our safety management system that we came up with. We have our own safety department, we have our own safety officers. If we have any incident or accidents, our safety department works with the NTSB to help with all those investigations with, not just to help, but also so that we can learn from that, put all of those safety items in place. Early activation is something that we work toward with every program. We ask all of our DPS, sheriff's officers, and our first responders or fire departments to early activate, our EMS. If you call us, all that's doing is shaving some minutes off of the prep time that it takes for us to get here. And just a little FYI, so our flight time from Granberry to here is seven minutes. Generally, our lift times, it varies with pilots based on what we have, that's part of our safety system. They have a number that they have to go through and get, depending on how many flight hours they have, how many flight hours they have in that aircraft, how familiar they are with the area. It all gets it down to a number, and that gives them an appropriate lift time for their experience in that aircraft in this area. So, our lift times range anywhere from seven to 10 to 12 minutes, depending on if we have a workover pilot. All of our pilots that are here full-time, we're at seven or eight minutes for liftoff. So, any of the early activation that we ask for just knocks off some of the stuff that we have to do on our safety side before we can lift. Some of those things that, you know, a lot of people ask questions, what do you have to do before you lift? We actually have to get approval from, you know, a safety side. FAA requires our operational control center to have approval and approve all of our flight times and our flight path and our flight, everything for our flight plan before we lift. That's all interfaced on Flight Bag, an electronic flight bag. We do it either on the computer at the desk, if we're at base, or we do it on an iPad. Those are all required, it's required by every flight program, so there's really no getting away from some of the time that we have to spend on those things. So, we really do ask for early activation. If a DPS officer rolls up on a rollover, you know, and you need to early activate, they can early activate, and if you don't need us, we just turn around and call. We're not going to come over and charge anybody for being here, that's part of the service that Air Evac offers. We want to be as close to the patient as possible when the time is there. So, we always ask for early activation. And then, like I said, if we are receiving that call or request from outside of Hood County, we lift and do an air standby, so that means we're already coming, we're going to lift and come your way. We don't do that in Hood County, just because we're so close. We're literally hovering over them and circling, it makes everybody really nervous, so they don't prefer that. But, if we're out of county, or we know that we have that little bit of flight time ahead of us, we're going to go ahead and come this way. And again, if you don't need us, just say, hey, cancel Air Evac, and we're out. We just say, thanks, y'all be safe. The maps, just have a ring there where you can kind of see where we are in Granberry and how far we are away from Fort Worth with access. Generally, our flight time is about 20 to 30 minutes, depending on head and tailwind. It's not long, and it's a lot faster than trying to drive through some of the traffic that we got. With that being said, I don't want to get too hard of operations, but let Mario, he is the membership expert, I'll let Mario introduce.
Thank you so much, Martha, I appreciate it. And one of the things that I wanted to emphasize, you know, when Martha was speaking of safety, since I've been with the company, has probably been one of the most important things that attracted me to working with them. You know, one of the things that they have always focused on is, we're going to rescue a victim. We don't want to become victims ourselves, you know, we're rescuing one or two, we don't want four, in addition to the pilot, the medics, and the nurse. So, that's one of the things that has been very, very well exposed by this organization. So, with that, I'm going to take you through a little bit of a broader view, that was the local scene, but with Air Evac, we basically are getting four major providers, which is Air Evac, Life Team, of course, Guardian Flight, MedTrans, and Reach. This organization basically provides the largest membership network in the country, over 320 locations across 38 states, which includes Alaska and Hawaii. We have over 3 million Air Medicare network members, so this is a well-put-together program that's been proving itself over the years. This just gives you a little bit of a snapshot of what we're actually, what the membership actually offer. We're not, we're not a seven-operation north-central Texas provider. This is a really, truly, a national program. So, where our members fly, anywhere in the country, them or their household members would have access to this program right here. Again, over 320 locations across 38 states. So, what does the membership really entail? What does it provide? For one, it's really a financial safety net that we're talking about here. I don't know if any of you folks have had yourselves, or have heard of someone being airlifted to a hospital from this area? If you have, or if you have not, it's quite costly. If you are not covered, it's going to put a ding in your pocket. And if the medical emergency did not affect you, receiving the bill probably will. We're looking at anywhere from, at least from the consultation, who was, who were there not too long ago, and we asked the same question, has anybody had this experience? And part of you hands went up. There was one gentleman that said that he had suffered a cardiac problem. He said that when he got his bill back, it was about $60,000. Of course, insurance covered, covered some, not all, but even with the 20% that was left over for him as a responsibility, plus out-of-pocket expenses and deductibles, there was still quite a few thousand dollars that he was in the hole. So, this safety net covers basically no out-of-pocket expenses, no deductibles. Whatever the insurance does not cover, we absorb, okay? So, no expenses at all. It covers, like you mentioned, everyone under your roof, that's physical, a little term. So, if in your house, if you live in a duplex or triplex, you know, whatever, and you have 15 family or friends that live with you, they will be covered, which is very, very beneficial. Again, it's coast-to-coast protection that we're talking about, and this also allows you access to a teledoc service, which is at your disposal for a discount rate of $3 a month. So, Martha spoke of the, you know, local process, right, of the emergency, but this is what is expected anywhere you go across the nation. Of course, the 911 call is initiated, is received, and then, at that point, it is determined whether or not helicopter or air transportation is needed, and that is again, whether it be a helicopter or an airplane. There may be instances where you're too far away, or you're in a location out climbing a huge rock or something out, you know, the west coast or the east coast, and it's too far for you to be taken with a helicopter, then we'll also have a fixed-wing aircraft that can take you. This particular process, again, the objective is to take you to the most appropriate hospital, not just the closest hospital, but what's nearby. It's designed to take you to the most, and Martha spoke about, you know, trauma, for example, from here, from the Glen Rose area, the nearest level-one trauma centers would be JPS and Texas Harris. Those would be the nearest, and of course, then you got Dallas, right? But during the pandemic, there was quite a bit of a difficult time finding hospitals that would be able to take patients. So, we had occasions where we had to literally go from the scheduled route of going to Fort Worth, and then at times going even further. We had instances where we had to take patients to Oklahoma and other neighboring states just to get somebody to where they needed to be, so that's something important. And again, another nice feature about our membership is that it covers you with home emergencies, on-the-road emergencies, but that last point right there, where you see it says out and about, some memberships of other providers have a clause pertaining to that particular point. If you're out doing something that they deem you shouldn't have been doing, you know, like, you know, rock climbing or skydiving, then there's a fine clause there that says, no, that's not going to be covered, you know, it's not a medical emergency that is natural, I guess. But with us, whatever it is that you're doing out and about, you are covered. And then, of course, you know, the fact that the membership protects you financially from any responsibility. And our memberships also play a factor in our community, because as you may imagine, you know, Martha spoke about, you know, lifting the aircraft, though, just as soon as we lift that aircraft and we've got all the personnel in it, there's already expenses associated to it. So, the small amount that a membership provides a year for an entire household is very, very small compared to what the expenses actually mean a year in the salaries of those professionals on there. So, the membership program does also have an impact on the community. Through those memberships, we're also able to offset some of the costs and the expenses that are associated. So, it brings comfort to the community, because it makes, lets them know that we're going to be here, you know, we're financially making this program work to where you're going to have access to this support. So, what are memberships, how can they be financed, or financed, I'm sorry? There's three ways that they can be financed. And again, you know, like I mentioned at the beginning, we would like to present this as an alternative or as a benefit program for your volunteer fire department and really county employees in general, wherever you seem, you know, maybe you may be able to gain benefit from. The first way to finance is that employer-paid group plan. And what that is, is basically, you're an organization purchasing X amount of memberships and gifting it to those employees or those members who you want them to have, okay? It's a gift. So, if month number three, even though it's a year membership, month number three, that employee or that member departs, or he moves, and he's no longer associated with you, they take it with them. It's a gift. The second way can be financed is through a census plan. This is our most common, commonly-used plan for volunteer fire departments in county agencies. This plan basically, think of it as a pool of memberships that are being purchased. They remain part of the county, in this case, or the organization that purchases them. It's theirs. While the employee or the member is with you, they benefit from it. They, again, keep in mind, when I say they, I also mean their households, right? They benefit from it, but as they depart, then that membership stays with you, they don't take it. Another nice good feature about it is that, because it's pretty laid-back, it's managed to the point that it doesn't require, it's not as labor-intensive. So, at year number one, when you sign up, you say, we've got 100 or 50 members, then that's exactly how the fees are figured, you know, 50 times what the amount of the memberships are. At the, during the year, if you have employees leave or employees come, it's all going to remain on a 50 number. There's nothing financially that's going to change, okay? Where it will change will be at the revision of that, at the ending of that first year. Then, we'll go back and say, okay, so how many employees do you have now? Now we have 75. Okay, so we go back, we address that new balance, 75 times X amount of memberships, and we add a percentage of a cushion, you know, which is assessed at that time, just to make sure that if in case throughout the second year, you're going to be adding some, there's a little bit of a cushion there as well, okay? The third and final way that this could be financed is through a payable deductible program, again, with volunteer fire departments, it's really no salary, right? So, there's nothing that could be pulled out. But, we've seen some occasions where counties have different ways of making something like this work, but it's very difficult. So, again, you guys would know how to work those numbers in case, that would be something that you'll have to look at. Terms and conditions, just a few things that I'd like to mention. The application and the payment is something that would be basically, they turn the key so that the engine will start running. Once we get the documentation signed and we get payment received, the membership becomes active. We do have a 15-day waiting period before plan is active. However, AMCN retains the right to be able to waive that period on any unforeseen event. What does that mean? So, for example, things begin today, everything is signed and funds have been submitted, then it begins. But then, an employee or someone in your care or in your organization has an accident the following day, that is an unforeseen event. Just last week, we had a county sign on with us, and I think it was two days, I got clarification on that actually, it was a couple of days after they had signed, and one of their employees had a son that drowned in their pool. And so, he was airlifted, he was taken, and there were of course, you know, concerned about everything, and the organization said, clearly, this was an unforeseen event. So, those are the type of things that are covered on that little clause there. Billing, not going to get into this very, very deeply, but we can tell you that we are a patient-first type of an organization. We have a complete department of medical billing experts with over 45 years of combined experience that know how to process things. And the reason why I bring this up is because, as community members, there may be members of the community that are not insured, right? They don't have insurance. So, what happens is, technically and literally, you know, if you don't have insurance, the bill is going to go to them as individuals. But, our department finds ways, ways to help them cover those expenses, whether it be through, you know, any kind of help that may be out there, or maybe just, you know, working out a payment plan with them. But, either way, those folks, they've been trained for, you know, over 45 years of combined experience, they know what they're doing, they know how to get the help that people need when it comes to making these finances. So, what is the pricing structure look like? Basically, it's designed on the amount of members and the length of the commitment. So, for example, on the screen here, you see anywhere from three to 149 memberships or members. If it's a one-year, it would be $75. Three years, $195. Five years, $295. And 10 years, $585. And I'll just like to, is it okay if I?
You bet.
Yeah. I've put together folders for each of you folks. What you're going to see right now is basically on these folders.
Okay.
Okay?
Then when they have 200 views.
Exactly, exactly, because they won't be equipped after this. So, but that's basically what it is. And one thing that I would like to say, some people ask, well, you know, why would we want to sign on, you know, our organization for three years or five years or 10 years? Well, there's two benefits to it. One, there won't be the concern of, you know, something lapsing. And then, the other one is really, you're locking in pricing too, right? As we know, inflation and other factors play a role, and so, you being able to get a membership that has a lengthier term allows you to secure the pricing. Once you purchase that membership, there's no coming back and saying, oh, you know what, prices, fuel prices for aircraft, jet fuel has gone up, you know, that's irrelevant to you, we absorb that. So, that's basically the pricing structure right there. And in the folders, you will see also the three different types of being able to finance, right? The payable deductible, the census, and the group form, okay? So, just real briefly, something else I'd like to add, that's what we call the emergent membership, right? The helicopter on the side of the road, or going out to the farmhouse to get somebody that's, you know, fallen off of a tree. We also have something called a non-emergent membership program, which is the Fly You Home. And this is really designed for folks that travel. So, all of you guys are active people, so I'm sure you travel outside of Somerville County and maybe across state lines and maybe even internationally. So, we have this Fly You Home membership program that really is designed to bring you back home if in case you happen to fall ill somewhere else. So, I'll give you an example. If you travel, for example, to the northeast, right, and you fall ill in a hospital in the northeast, and you're taken, there's an emergency, as soon as you're deemed stable enough for flight, this particular program will bring you back home to a hospital of your choice so you can finish recuperating. I've heard people tell me in the past, well, you know, I went to, when I travel, I go see family in the northeast, so, you know, it wouldn't really benefit me, because while I stay there, I got family there too that can take care of me. True, true. However, there's more than just an emotional benefit to this. If you, for example, are taken in the northeast while you're traveling to a hospital out-of-network, as you are sure understand that phrase, out-of-network, it means money, right? So, you'll be paying premium and additional funds because you're at an out-of-network hospital. So, you being able to be brought home, back to a doctor of your choice, someone you know, someone who can take care of you, having your family here where you live near you, and being in a hospital where you're not going to be, you know, robbed, if you will, to some degree, that does have a financial aspect to it. So, this particular program is a bedside-to-bedside service, right? Bedside from hospital to a bedside of your hospital of choice back home. It's not meant to bring you back home so you can go back to your literal home. It's a hospital-to-hospital type of an approach. And this, just to give you an idea, does not require a specific group size, it's all group sizes, basically $140 per year, $153, and five years, $500, and 10 years, $600, just to give you an idea. If that's something that would be also of interest to you, we would be more than happy to provide you with more details on that. But, really, that's the presentation that I wanted to share with you today. If there are any questions that you folks may have right now that we can address for you, we would love to be able to do so, whether it be on the membership side or the operational side, we'll be really glad to hear any questions.
I know, I'm sorry, will you?
I know, what we have with care flight right now, we just have to look at comparisons and see the both, and what the court will want to do or not want to do. And now that we have the pricing, you know, we sit down with the auditor and treasurer, and two officers, and figure out what maybe we can and can't do, it's a budget, and we can bring it back to the court and discuss. We thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, folks.
I think the mayor has his hangover just here, the mayor. Big up, mayor.
I'm intimately involved with this group, friendships now. I work there in the treasurer group, the management group. I know Michael Price is the current CFO. And if you don't have this coverage, living in where we live, especially you rich farmers outside the city, I'm telling you, get it. The safety factors, the operation, the expenses, nothing to the $40,000 tab you'll get if you have to use this service. They don't know me, they didn't know I was here, but when I saw it on the agenda, I can assure you, it is the biggest, it is the best, and if you don't have it, you're making a mistake. I keep it. I keep it as an individual. So anyway, just my 10 cents.
Thank you. You can send that check to Joe Gold.
I did want to make one clarification. I know if you worded something, I want to make sure that it's clear. If you're a full member with our membership and you're uninsured, you're still covered. So if you're wanting to pay for a full membership, you do have coverage, insured or uninsured. So I do want to make sure.
Thank you for clarifying that, I appreciate it. And that's basically what I meant, if you're not insured, then you will be responsible. But if you are a member, then that covers you. And I apologize if I didn't.
Thank you all very much, appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Do y'all need any kind of quick break before we move into record business? Are y'all ready to move into record business?
I'm ready.